Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Sholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present for this time. Would like to acknowledge those that are with us tonight in the council chambers, as well as those who may be watching on City 56 or via internet. We're grateful for our community and for the opportunity we have to serve this night. Would like to begin by an invocation. We ask council member Hatch, if he'd lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Kukavas. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we gather this evening for the Sholo City Council meeting. We ask that thy spirit will be with us and that our decisions will be good. We ask a special blessing on those in our community that have suffered a loss, particularly the family of David Kellywood. Please bless those officers that keep our communities safe, safeguard them, and let no harm befall them. Again, we thank thee for the opportunity to serve. We thank thee for the weather that we have up here and the wonderful citizens of Sholo. We ask a blessing on them all. When you say this, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member Hatch and councilwoman Kukavas. Tonight, if you had the opportunity of drive through town, you'll see that our blue lights are on. And we're deeply saddened to learn of the passing of White Mountain Apache Officer David Kellywood early Monday morning, and we offer our condolences to his family, friends, and fellow officers, and to the tribal members of this significant loss. Sadly, his passing is a tragedy that our Sholo citizens are not unfamiliar with, and one that will affect the lives of those living in the Apache Reservation and beyond. Officer Kellywood is a hero for protecting those who were in harm's way during the tragic incident that took his life. The White Mountain Apache Tribe is blessed to have members such as Officer Kellywood, who give unselfishly of themselves and share a sense of community. He'll be greatly missed by his wife and two children, along with those he served and those he served with. Last Friday, his wife, Camilla Kellywood, graduated with her master's degree, and they were so excited in the things that were happening. He left behind two children, ages five and ages three, Gabriel and David Kellywood Jr. As I talked with tribal chairwoman, Wendy Rilbert, she shared with me the moment of taking his body from the hospital. As a three-year-old and a five-year-old could only sense a little bit right now of the sense of what had happened. But they saluted their father as he was taken out. And I think we too salute the servicemen of our community, the first responders, and those who do so much, and they're sometimes underpaid, underappreciated, and deal with the tragedies and all the things that we don't have to deal with. And we salute you tonight and for his family and the things they have done for our community. Officer Kellywood's body will lie in state with an open viewing at the Chief Altusay Activity Center in White River, beginning February 27, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., and his funeral being held on Saturday, February 29, at 11:00 a.m. Those wishing to donate to his cause and to Wells Fargo Branch, and the memoriam is set up for Officer David Kellywood. At this time, if we could just give a minute of silence in his memory. Thank you. Item we have tonight on, first item we have is Call to the Public. We'll open that for any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city council. May do so at this time. Please address the council as a whole, and know that your time is limited to three minutes per individual, and know that we cannot, we can, at the conclusion of the Call to the Public, council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. This time, we'll ask Mr. Steve Slaton if he'd like to come forward. He's filled out a slip. State your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Steve Slaton. I live at 4422 Larchburg Road, Sholo, Arizona. I'm a co-owner of the Trump Store here in town, and appreciate everybody's support, and this is Saturday would have to the officer. I want to direct it to the mayor, the council, everybody here, the citizens. What I'd like to propose is, I'm sure you're all aware of a lot of the attacks going on in our Second Amendment, and I'd like to propose for the city of Sholo to declare itself as a Second Amendment sanctuary city. It'd be one of the first in the states to do so. Four counties have already have done so, and astonishing, even the Navajo Nation has come on board as well, or declared itself part of Apache County, and if Navajo County goes on with it, declared part of Navajo County as well as a sanctuary, Second Amendment, for county to protect our rights on it. So what I brought you was all the information, what Yappapai County did, there's some of the other counties, the actual official of Navajo County, and that Navajo's what they want to do, we're gonna propose it to Navajo County. I believe it's gonna be in a couple weeks. We'll propose, we'll be getting together with sheriff on it. But it's got a lot of good information in here, outlined, and I'd like to leave this with you folks and put this on a future agenda, so that way the city attorney can look at it, you folks can look at it, and decide what course to take on it. But I think it'd be very, very important for what's going on, and I don't know if you folks realize this, but there's been 30 bills introduced to our state legislature for controlling, taking away our rights of our guns, our Second Amendment, and it's preposterous. And so we need to put a stop on it. We had a fantastic Second Amendment rally down in Phoenix this past Saturday, great support from everybody. Sadly to say, even there wasn't a lot of Republicans there, and sadly there wasn't many Democrats there, but a lot of great people, a lot of great activists, who are looking out there for saving our Constitution. So with that, I would like to hand this to, I believe, Rachel, to hand out, and if you have any questions about the Trump Store, and if you need more information, we'd be happy to give it to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll see that council members get a copy. Anyone else for Call to the Public? Seeing nobody else moved, I'll close Call to the Public and come back to Special Events. This time of Special Event, we have an update in Navajo County.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to come and speak and give a brief report from the sheriff's office. I asked my assistant to see, contact the city councils in each of the jurisdictions within Navajo County, and see if I can come give a brief report. As you know, the sheriff's office has jurisdiction or coverage in around each of the five municipalities within the county, and I feel it's important that we talk about and we share what we've worked on, and kind of give some feedback on some concerns that we have going forward, and it's kind of the trends and things that we're looking out for as far as crime and crime reduction, and how, and especially how we're working together with the city of Sholo and the, excuse me, and the Sholo Police Department. Tonight, I'm joined with Chief Deputy Brian Swanney. I don't think he needs a, yeah, chief deputy. I don't think he needs an introduction here in the city of Sholo. He's been a resident here for a long time and very well-known, and proud to have him on board, working with the sheriff's office, brings a lot of great experience and vision to help us move forward this coming year. And also, Chief Joe Shelley with the Sholo Police Department. We've worked closely with the police department here in Sholo, as we have a lot of shared services, and we are housed together in the Public Safety Building here on the Deuce Club, and I wanted just to, part of my script that I, that I had prepared tonight, you know, talks about how we work together as, as public safety throughout the county. But I appreciate the words that you shared just now, Mayor Seymour. And the only thing that'll get me emotional is when that, that subject comes up, and if I do, I apologize. But Monday, yes, early mornings on Monday is a great example of what I wanted to come speak tonight. I did not, of course, we didn't know that horrific incident was gonna, gonna occur, but Officer Kellywood was a true warrior and a great young man who wanted nothing more than to serve his community. He first started his career in law enforcement with the Navajo County Sheriff's Office as a detention officer, and he served with us for a couple years, and was a well-respected, well-loved individual that brought a lot of leadership into our jail, and the people there loved working with him. And we encouraged him. He wanted to leave to go serve his home community, his home tribe, the White Mountain Apache Tribe. He wanted to be a police officer, and he lived his dream, and he graduated from the academy last May, and we supported him as he left our agency, because he was going to support, and he was gonna work in this community. And Monday morning, he responded to a call for service where the community felt that there was a threat in their community, that they called 911, and he was a warrior that stepped up and responded, first man on scene, and he stood face-to-face with that threat. And his life was taken. He's a father, he's a husband, he's a son. But the positive that came out of this is, what I was coming here to speak tonight was how we work closely as public safety throughout the county. And that night, just like we experienced in the city of Sholo three and a half years ago, and it seems like just yesterday, and when that happened, we didn't want to see that happen again, and unfortunately, that is, that has stricken our community. But today, you saw the community that comes together, you see the blue lights throughout the city of Sholo. Sholo has been a great supporter of law enforcement. Sholo rallied around the, the officer, your police department, when you lost an officer, Darren Reed, November 8, 2016. And now this has happened again, and this is, this is why I came to speak about, was that we work together as public safety officials throughout this county, and we, even though we may wear a different color uniform, yesterday, we, one of the asks of the White Mountain Apache Tribe was to kind of handle their, their PIO or their, the press, and we, we contacted all the chiefs and all the surrounding municipalities, and we, we came together, because we all worked together, and we gave a message of, of support for this young man. And today, with the procession that came through town and came through the reservation up through Pine Top Lakeside into Sholo and on into Taylor, there's people standing up and down the streets, saluting, and showing their support for the men in blue. And for that, my comments tonight, and I apologize for deviating from what I came to say, but that, that is an example. I usually go to the city council, and I talk about drug cases, or I talk about major crimes where we've worked together to, to bring resolution. But that was a major incident that everybody responds and everybody comes together. White Mountain Apache Tribe's a small agency, and they don't have the manpower to, to deal with this type of incident and still respond to the needs of their community. Every single police department and neighboring agencies and tribal agencies of all, they're all sending officers down there to take calls for service, so that they can heal together as a small agency, and they can get through this, and then we can go down there and we can support them, and we can make sure that public safety continues to move forward on that, on their land. But just, again, I apologize for, I asked for just a couple minutes. What I came to talk about was the Sholo, the city of Sholo, and the Navajo County Sheriff's Office has a close working relationship. In this last year, we had 83 calls for service where we, as an agency, responded and assisted the city of Sholo. The city of Sholo had 626 bookings or in custody arrests that booked into the Navajo County Jail. This area, which we, we designated as Area 5, which includes several lake estates, Linden, and the unincorporated areas around Sholo, we, as an agency, meaning the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, responded to 3,202 calls, and we conducted 1,011 traffic stops in this area, and, which is pretty on average for what we did last year. We had a slight increase in calls for service in this area. Our, our average response time for citizens in and around Sholo was 10 minutes and 45 seconds, which is something I'm really proud of. We, we strive for customer service, and we strive to meet the needs in a big area such as that. That's something we always work on, and it's down from the last year. In talking with Chief Shelley, we see kind of the biggest threats that we, working together, we're, we have a joint task force, drug task force that we work, that's under the direction of the sheriff's office, called Major Crimes Apprehension Team. And what we're seeing is that the biggest areas of our concern in and around the city of Sholo, for as far as the sheriff's office, is property crimes and the use of drugs, and the drug trafficking, and the use of methamphetamine, heroin, and new and upcoming drug that's, that brings great concern to us, and, and this police department is the use of fentanyl. You've seen a lot of that nationwide. You've seen it being talked about in Phoenix, but it's something that we're seeing more and more of here, and throughout Navajo County, whether it's in the northern part of the county or the southern. It's something that we're working together to find ways to combat this, and through education, prevention, treatment, legislation, of course, our, our business of enforcement. And we're, we're, we're working with the schools to get the message out that this is a dangerous, dangerous drug. People experiment with marijuana, they experiment with alcohol at young age, or they experiment, experiment with methamphetamine, but they seem to live long lives, or they live, and right now, people are experimenting with fentanyl, and it's not, it's becoming very fatal. And so, those are the things that we see on the horizon that can be, that we need to work hard, and we need to get our message out to the community, and we're, we're addressing those concerns. But just in closing, again, just wanted to give a brief recap of the cooperation and the working and the commitment to work with the city of Sholo and to help combat these things that are concerned to us, and to continue to strive on that public safety needs and the, the customer service that the citizens of Sholo and the surrounding communities deserve. And so, with that, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and apologize again, but we're going a little long on that. But it's, I appreciate the words that were spoken this, at the beginning of this meeting. We do feel the support from the cities, and we feel the support from the city of Sholo for our, our officers that face these, these challenges every day. So thank you, and if you had any questions for maybe, or unhappy otherwise, appreciate your...
Thank you. Any questions at council?
Only thing I have to say is, you don't need to apologize for anything. Our hearts are just as tight as your hearts are, and even though the mayor's the one who spoke, all our hearts on the city council is, is grieving on the loss. So you don't need to apologize for anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to commend you for, you know, what you guys do when you sit here and share that you have 3,200, you know, calls of service, that's about 11 a day, and stuff that, you know, is helping outside of what our, our police department does in those areas that we don't have covered. And so it's, it's definitely, you know, know that you have our backs and we have your backs. It's great. We want to welcome, is it Deputy, you know, Swanney? I don't know, I didn't introduce him there, but we're glad to have you back in our area, and what you do, thank you for coming back. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a consent calendar. Any items to pull or discuss the individual item? We're gonna have a consideration of a memorandum of understanding from Eastern Arizona Safe Trails Task Force, a consideration of acceptance of grant funds from Syracuse University School of Information Studies for the library, and consideration of acceptance of grant funds from Pitney Bowles Foundation, and also consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council meeting of February 4, 2020. Is there a motion?
No move.
We have a motion by council member Leach, second by councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Pass six to zero. Thank you. Our next item is, item, item 8A, new business, consideration award of a construction contract for Meadow Trail Pavilion Design Build, City of Sholo Project PR-2219. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Sholo solicited proposals from interested parties for the Meadow Trail Pavilion Design Build, City of Sholo Project Number PR-2219. The work includes the construction of a 24 by 36-foot building containing two restrooms. The building will be located on Arizona Parcel Number 2102310A. This area is also known as the Meadow Trailhead. The building will have a concrete slab for, 410 corrugated roofing, and will be sited with salvaged barn wood from the old Ellsworth Barn. The building will have a concrete masonry unit superstructure and two double-rolling barn doors. The restrooms are each approximately eight feet by eight feet, and will be constructed from concrete masonry units. Each room shall include a water closet, sink, and vanity grab bars, paper product dispensers, mirror, and all of the necessary appliances. A general sketch showing the layout of the restrooms was included with the request for proposals. Camera, can you flick down to the next slide? So there's a rendering here in the floor plan and some elevations. The work also includes furnishing and installing framing, siding, roofing, painting, plumbing, electrical, heating, and all other incidental items for a complete turnkey product, project. The city will construct the building pad and stub power, water, and sewer to approximately five feet from the building. The successful proposal will also provide permissible design drawings for the construction, a preliminary schedule, and an itemized cost proposal. In January 2020, staff advertised a request for proposals and received responses from two interested parties. There were several selection criteria, including qualifications, experience, and price. A selection committee reviewed the statements of qualifications, and Southern Construction Company, Inc., was determined to be the highest-ranked firm. Southern Construction Company, Inc., with whom the city has established a very good relationship, was also the contractor to build the operations building at the wastewater treatment plant and several public restrooms. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the Meadow Trail Pavilion Design Build, City of Sholo Project Number PR-2219, to Southern Construction Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $106,830.82.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Leach?
Um, other than I think it's a great idea, finally. Security. Are we gonna put cameras out there? Are we thinking about it? Are we gonna put lighting, more lighting? It's pretty dark in that meadow.
I'm gonna talk to Danny about it. We, we have had that discussion, but it has to do with if we can get a line of sight line to one of our other facilities, so we can daisy chain that in to the system. We can also install game cams or something like that that aren't remotely operated, but we can go in and check if there's any damage or vandalism. We can go in there and check the, the cameras in there.
I just think...
We'd say at a minimum, that's what we do.
I just think it needs to happen during construction, not wait till it's done, not, I, I think it needs to be before construct, I mean, I think it needs to happen before you give the contract away, that we have some kind of security out there, because it's gonna be dark out there, it's gonna be, I, I know it's right on the road, but still, is there any lighting in that parking lot now, or no?
Not this time, but we're, we're gonna bring power in, and our long-term plans are to have some, expand that parking lot and have some lighting out there in the parking as well.
Like I said, I just, I hope we're thinking about that now, not during construction.
We have had that discussion. It wasn't included in the original scope, but that would probably be something that city staff would do anyway, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
What's the timeline on the expansion of the parking lot and the lighting?
I can't say. I don't know if that is even in our capital improvements project. We'll probably try to do that as a smaller improvements project. Can't say right now. We really haven't discussed the timeline on that.
Councilmember Hatch?
Yes, you're talking about a line of sight for your alarming. Is there still a repeater up in the attic of the Hampton Hotel? I know we had one in there initially when we built that.
Oh, was it a city repeater, or?
I believe it was.
I did not know that.
You might check on that.
We'll, we'll definitely do some further checking.
Because that's, that's got a perfect line of sight. I know the distance is, is too great, but...
And I can get more information about the timeline for the parking lot, too. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I like, you know, the concept of what we're doing here. I just, I'm grateful that we're using the Ellsworth barn wood that was in the barn at the very end down there by the archery range, and where how you get back into the, those were subdivision or the, where they live. But to utilize that into this, and also then with Adam's house that we just purchased, we have out here, I think it's just a good heritage that what we're doing with the city of Sholo, and all that stuff together and making things look new again, but yet still have the old recalls of what's going on here in Sholo and where we came from. So, thank you very much.
And I think that direction came from this council, so thank you for that. I mean, I can put together a project, but you guys are the ones that gotta come up with them, so.
Long time ago.
Good projects.
I'm gonna kind of ask for a little bit of latitude here from council, if they would, being that this was the Ellsworth barn up there in part of the meadow, and we've worked for acquiring that meadow for many years. I'd like to see that we use some of the beams that are, are still available, that were stored, to try to bring back some of the old rustic wood, maybe inside, to be able to show that, and maybe incorporate that into part of the, the work, the design. And if there's possible to take an old picture of that, I know Mayor Farno took a lot of pictures and things. If there's a good picture that could be incorporated and show what this once was, and maybe some old, you know, things that had to do with some of our farming heritage and some of the things there, to put on display, and, and if it exceeds this a little bit, would probably, I'd, I'd probably look at a change order acceptance or whatever, to broaden that scope just a little bit, to make sure that this does show some of that antique heritage stuff that we, we have had.
We are scheduling a pre-construction meeting either late this week or early next week, and we'll have a discussion with the contractor, and I'll ask him to bring his design person in there. We actually, the reason we looked at just the siding part of that was because we're gonna have to do trusses in there, and, but I, I think there's some opportunities to use some of those beams, whether as decoration or as actual...
I don't think it'd be structural, but mostly decor and facade, if possible. I don't know how other council members feel, but...
Except for when you said change order, that was shocking.
Yeah.
I think that's the first time you've said that ever.
If you look at this front elevation, we do have a couple of support columns there. We have support columns in the rear, too. That would be a, a good use for some of the larger beams then.
You know, even outside, I don't know. I agree. I'd put them outside, even above the, anywhere.
But I agree also with the lighting, you know, if we can, at least, you know, we're gonna have to maybe need lighting for those restrooms. I don't know, or if they're gonna have, you know, what they're gonna have for lights, and...
We will have lights and heaters in there. We'll probably have some exterior lights on the building as well, just maybe some uplighting even to kind of highlight it at night.
Close as we can, if we're gonna use something to try to make it, simulate that, let's try to get it as close to looking like an old barn.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I move to award the construction contract to Meadow Trail Provision Pavilion Design Build, City of Sholo Project Number PR-219, 2219, Southern Construction Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $106,830.82, with a possible change order.
I was gonna second that until you said that.
Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion? Yeah. Councilmember Hatch, you have more discussion?
I'll just say... I just say, John had his hand up first.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Pass six to zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item we have is item eight B, agree. Uh, consideration of approval of agreement with Global Traffic Technologies LLC for traffic safety related equipment and services. Chief Shelley.
Mayor and Council, Global Global Traffic Technologies LLC, also known as GTT, is a company specializing in intersection control devices for emergency vehicles. Equipment is installed at each intersection, which is controlled by devices mounted on emergency vehicles. Using GPS technology, emergency vehicles responding with lights and siren will be able to ensure that they have the green light when approaching a signal controlled intersection. Sholo Police Department wishes to join with Timber Mesa and Medical District, Pine Top Fire District, in a cost sharing agreement. Arizona Department of Transportation is also participating in the installation and maintenance of the signals themselves. Navajo County Sheriff and Arizona Department of Public Safety are also considering joining this agreement. If they join in the future, this will lower the cost to the city. The city's portion of installing and maintaining GTT system is thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars per year. This cost includes equipping twenty-two patrol cars and installing equipment and software at all signal intersections. The contract is valid until June thirtieth, twenty thirty, but may be canceled for cause or if funds are not appropriated by the council. Annual funding for this agreement will be requested as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget process. Attachments are attached. And I'm available for any questions you have.
Councilmember Leach.
Just a comment. I I thought that we already had them.
No.
I really did. I thought they would change when the fire trucks came off the hill, but we don't have that installed.
Mayor and City Council, we had one years ago over off a sixth. And it was to basically turn on Old Linden, so it would turn that one red. So when the fire trucks came out, they only had to worry about one direction. Uh, that sense is gone by the wayside, probably six, seven years ago. This one is for every intersection that we touch, all the way from two sixty-sixty, you know, actually Old Linden and two sixty Clark, all the way through to the other side of Lakeside. So every intersection is going to be, I guess, wired or or set up for this way, but we're only paying the ones that we actually touch.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah. Um, do you know if the state has done anything with the law regarding people trying to wreck these things with private devices and such as that? And what the penalties for such a behavior is? I'm thinking there has been something passed. I'm hoping there has, or I messed up by making it public here, maybe.
Mayor and City Council, you know, the the older way, the optic, I don't know what we used to use was a light emitting device which had a certain frequency. Uh, this one is going to be a GPS frequency, so it's on a GPS system. And like everywhere else, you possibly could get hacked or into the system itself. Uh, but they've got have great success so far with this GPS system. And the reason why we're going to the new system is because the old system tends to have the small lenses in them, the long cone lenses that you saw before or see around the state. Um, with our snow and ice, which is probably the time we're going to use it, will clog those up and not allow us to actually use a system. So we looked beyond all of these things and with Timber Mesa and our partners, we came up with this solution. So it's a long, long answer for you, but I hope GT Technologies does a great job like what we try to do with ours.
Speak on this just a little bit about, you know, what you feel that we'll do for traffic safety. I mean, we're going to spend forty thousand dollars a year for possibly the next ten years, so it's a pretty large price tag. But, you know, the safety not only for responding people, but also for citizens. But what, you know, what's the statistics? I don't know how many accidents we have had at intersections. I don't recall any, you know, I'm sure there have been some, but in our community.
Mayor and City Council, I don't have the statistics in front of me for those specific accidents where it was emergency vehicles were involved or could have been involved. Uh, we see it on television quite a bit, uh, from the metro area and different areas that do not have opticons on a lot of those streets that they have down there. Um, but the area that we were looking at, we were studying two areas, Pima County being one. Uh, the Oracle Corridor, seventy-seven corridor, has a unified system where Pima County, Tucson PD, as well as Oral Valley PD, Denell County was touching some areas. So that corridor was worked on with Department of Transportation. They did a study down there and they've reduced the accidents quite a bit. Problem was the old technology that they were they were using, sometimes it wouldn't quite link up to the to the optocom system, the light system that they're using. That's why the GPS system was more favorable for us or to use that, and here's why. Uh, with the GPS system, we can set a distance before we get to the intersection, no matter where the intersections. And I I look at Wolford and two sixty. That's the one we have most of our intersection related accidents, major accidents at. And as you're coming down the hill on Wolford, you can set that that line up to about uh, almost four hundred yards to six hundred yards away. Well, that's over a quarter mile away. You're triggering the system. It's starting to take up. And inside the vehicle, whether it's a fire truck or a police car or an ambulance, you'll see the lights come on where it tells it's capturing the system and then it gives you a green light to say it's it's captured and then your light would be green. Everything else turns red. All other all other directions of travel go red. So you would be clearing the intersection as it's coming up. Cars would be sitting there and all of a sudden the light turns. They move out of the way. They hear the fire trucks or they hear the siren coming and they would move out of the way. So it's very, very safe for them. It's way safer for us. Even clearing intersections, we still have to take due regard. So we're not going to come up to an intersection and just drive straight through, but we'll go slowly through it and make sure that we we have everybody's attention for the most part.
It's a learning curve because people just think I just need to stop and some of them aren't even pulling over now. So it's pulling over, get out of the way. So.
But you see the ones with the old system where they flash in their lights and everything, trying to trigger trick the system, but it doesn't work that way. So. It's kind of funny.
Councilmember Leach.
You almost said the whole entire comment on the the driver's going to, it was it was responsible no matter what anyway.
That's correct.
Lights red or green, he's he's responsible. The only thing I didn't hear you say is Arrowhead. They're not part of this program. Is that correct?
That's correct. Not right now. They haven't been, uh, they haven't come on board with this at all. So they also have the opportunity to join if they need, or they they would like to, I'd say that.
Any other comments, questions? I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Leach.
I move to approve an agreement with Global Traffic Technologies LLC for traffic safety related equipment and service in the amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
You have a motion? Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch? Any other discussion? All for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Do that pass six to zero. We need to note that that's an annual rate or anything.
Yeah, I kind of said that in the body of it, the the funding source, but it's probably good to just put in the motion that it's an annual rate.
Is everybody okay with that? The second in the motion maker?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item we have, uh, thank you. Appreciate it. Next item we have is a consideration of approval to sell used police cars to the town of Globe. Chief Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The city council previously authorized purchasing fourteen police vehicles for our fleet to replace the vehicles that were no longer cost effective. Normally, the city strips these older vehicles of the police equipment and decals, which cost about five to six hundred dollars each, and then sends them to a public auction. The Globe Police Department is currently suffering a critical shortage of police vehicles. They have asked to purchase the police vehicles we are sending to auction for a fair market value. This is an emergency stopgap measure on their part until they can get some new vehicles. The city has six vehicles that we have an average Kelley Blue Book value of about sixteen hundred ninety-one dollars each. This takes into consideration one vehicle needing a new transmission and one vehicle being from a drug seizure. Globe is offering to purchase the six vehicles for the cost of two thousand dollars each, including the police equipment that's on them. The police equipment such as pushbars, excuse me, push bumpers, um, cages, et cetera, can't be used on new cars as there's all vehicle make and models specific. The vehicles that would be sold to Globe would include a two, one, two thousand three Chevy Impala, one, two thousand six Chevy Impala, two, two thousand seven Chevy Impalas, one, two thousand eight Chevy Impala, and one, two thousand seven Chevy Suburban. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Have we checked locally if like Taylor or Snowflake or Pine Top could use these at all or not?
Mayor and City Council, yes, we have, and we've also repurposed two to the city. Um, out of the fourteen that we're replacing, we've repurposed two of those vehicles that we had over there back into the city. Uh, we also put one out to the training site. No one else has approached us anywhere up here and we've put it out a couple of times at our chief's meeting and no one's approached on those, approaches on those at all.
Maybe we could start a council, uh, Kirby Bash or something with them, you know? Anything else? Any other questions? Look for a motion. Councilmember Hatch.
Move to authorize selling six retired police vehicles, unit numbers thirteen, twenty-four, sixty-three, seventy, seventy-three, and ninety-two owned by the city of Sholo to the town of Globe for twelve thousand dollars.
We have a motions or a second? Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? All for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Do that pass six to zero. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Next item we have is summary of current events. I'd like council members of any current events they have, they'd like to share this time. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Sholo Main Street, I mean, Sholo Meals and Wheels, Sholo City Senior Center. Uh, we had our our meeting and I want to let you know about some upcoming craft fairs going to be coming in May and we'll be announcing the dates and the time, but right now they're going to have a Mardi Gras Lunch and Music Festival thing at Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at the Sholo Senior Center at three oh one East McNeil. They're going to have New Orleans Jazz with Mountain Top Brass playing at eleven o'clock to about twelve o'clock. And this includes pancakes, scrambled eggs, sausages, cottage cheese and peaches, Mardi Gras cake serving serving that starts at eleven thirty. It's seven dollars a person and reserve your spot at nine two eight five three two oh six five six. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to thank our staff for the great daddy daughter dance they put on. That's a a big highlight in our community and they did a great job. Want to also thank our Public Works. They've been working on the pavilion over there at Sholo City Park, the old pavilion, and just encourage you to go by and take a look at that. Uh, they've done a super job on on getting that ready. They're about ready to reopen that. So, uh, just want to thank staff for their diligence in taking something that was all old and and making it look really awesome. Appreciate it. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you may have noticed the Culver's Restaurant opened on White Mountain Road a little over a week ago. They had, we've talked to the owner of the restaurant. They had a very successful opening a couple of weeks here, um, more than he could have imagined. And we just want to congratulate them for getting that store open and the weather conditions they were dealing with. Um, registration is being accepted for soft, uh, spring one pitch softball through March fourth and for grass volleyball, coed and men's division through April third. Registration for summer softball with coed men's and women's leagues will continue through April eleventh. And on any of those leagues, if you have any questions, you can contact Recreation at five three two forty-one thirty. And we've got, we have several improvement projects around town that are, um, we're working on more to get to start here in the spring, but Fairway Park Phase Four Waterline Improvements, which should, um, is scheduled to be, have the final paving and cleanup this week. Phase one of West Cooley Sewer main replacement, that's from Central to Fourth Avenue, is projected to be completed by the end of May. Um, in that area, we'll we'll then replace the water line that's going out to bed shortly. And then we'll be able to repave that road this year. And as always, we appreciate the public's patience as we deal with these improvement projects around the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. At this time, we have a scheduling of meetings. Any special meetings that need to schedule? And then we do have an executive session where we need to talk about the lease with Northeastern Arizona Community Resource Network and the development agreement for Navajo County AP number two-ten dash thirty-two dash oh one six and two-ten thirty-two dash zero one six L. And then the executive minutes of February fourth, twenty twenty. I need a motion to move into executive session. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kukavas, seconded by Vice Mayor. All those in favor? Any opposed? Do that pass six to zero. This time we'll move into executive session. We appreciate those of you who have been with us here tonight and thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.